It is now six nineteen and we will reconvene our regular meeting. And Dr. Head, do you have any introductions or special guests or recognitions you would like to discuss at this point?
Yes, so I have a couple of introductions. I would like for the board and really everybody in here to, I'd like to introduce my new executive assistant and this is the, I'm going to quit calling her the new Elva Borsch, but it is Fatima Barnett or Fatima, either one, that's her right here. I'm really glad to have her, I have to tell you, so is Helen, so is Florence, so is Karen, so is everybody that deals with me, so is my schedule, so I'll quit double booking myself and telling people I'll do things and then don't show up for that. So she started two weeks ago when I was out of town on vacation and just stepped right in and took care of her business and she used to work at H I S D. She got the job for a couple of reasons. One, she did a really good job in the interview and was the best qualified candidate and it just so happened I knew her boss at H I S D, Houston Independent School District, so the reference checks on this were really good. And her boss generally has the same personality as I do, which is pretty much no nonsense, let's just get on with this, and so she had great recommendations and I'm very happy she's in the office, so.
I'm going to put her on the spot. You have anything you want to say to the group?
Hello everyone, I'm happy to be here at Lone Star, very different than H I S D but in a good way.
So, a couple of other, you want to introduce Benton?
Hello. So, joining Lone Star College just this past January as CFO, it has truly been my pleasure to get to know and work with the colleagues of Finance and Administration and Facilities and Construction and it really is shaping up to be a wonderful team to work with. It has been great to have Robert Barrera as Associate Vice Chancellor for Facilities and Construction and now I'm excited to introduce to you another new member of Facilities and Construction, Bentley Scott. Stay up. So Bentley started October 2nd. He's the Executive Director of Real Estate and Strategic Planning. The department, I hope to grow in responsibility over time, is going to be handling the systems purchases and sales of land, management of our leases with the private and educational tenants, and strategic space planning. He has previous experience as Vice President for Cressa, which is a corporate real estate advisory firm, and he also was the Director at C B R E where he negotiated lease and sale transactions for office, retail, and industrial spaces. He has a Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Design, a Master's in Construction Management, both from Texas A&amp;M, and a Master's in Real Estate from John Hopkins University. He does want to mention that he has a wonderful family, his wife Tammy and two children ages one and four. Tammy and Bentley are both proud Aggies until a couple of years ago they lived in Washington DC and came back here to be close to their family. They are members of the First Baptist Church of Bryan and will be relocating to the Cypress area this month from their current home in college station.
Well, I guess I need to, I need to give them equal time, so he needs to say something too. Oh, there you go, okay.
Just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here and I look forward to serving Lone Star College.
Thank you, glad to have you.
So, CB Richard Ellis, correct?
Yes.
So are you familiar with Brandon Clark?
No, sir.
Attorney?
No, is he in Houston or?
He's a partner here in Houston.
Okay.
Now.
I know a couple of Brandon's, but not, not Mr. Clay.
He's married to my niece.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Maybe I should get to know him.
Yeah, I would if I were you. No, anyway, thanks.
Thank you.
Great. I can tell we're making a transition because every time we introduce anybody anymore they talk about how old their kids are and their, their children are younger than my grandchildren are.
You know they're trying to get where you are.
Yeah, I want to recognize our newest PhD, which is Shaw Ardalon, received his doctorate a couple of weeks ago. I know that's been a, trying to work full-time and have a family and be a college president and work on your doctorate is not easy. And lastly, if you don't know this, I want to congratulate Mario. Mario and his wife had a baby a couple of weeks ago. The important thing is, you want to tell them what the baby's name is?
Samuel Castillo.
Li, okay, Luke Samuel Castillo, and I want you to think just for a second about what that, what those initials. I didn't, I haven't asked you this because I really, but now that I have you because you're an attorney, did you do that on purpose or was that a?
Oh, and that was an accident, I'm sure.
Oh, lastly, sorry Helen, we have, I'd like to, for Helen Flaherty to come up and she is going to introduce one of our leadership groups.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. First, I want to tell you about an award we received. It is a certificate of nomination for award from the Texas Diversity Council for Corporate Commitment Diversity First Award. We received that last week.
So, just so I'm clear about this, you're going to, are you going to give a quick overview during your period of what that is?
Sure.
Okay, if you would, okay.
Thanks, Alicia. And I'm here tonight to introduce the second cohort of LSC LEAP, they're graduated today. LSC LEAP is our, sorry John, Leadership Development Program for our non-exempt staff and we, you've met the academy graduates before and LSC LEAP, which is for our more senior leaders, we also have next generation leadership. These are all in-house programs, year-long, to develop our leaders, to give them the skills they need to be Lone Star leaders. They embody our culture and also develop personally. The overview focuses on personal leadership. We want to give these folks the leadership skills they need to succeed both professionally and personally and to learn what it is to be an LSC leader. The program is year-long, cohort-based, career path exploration, leadership, a group project which teaches them how to work with others at Lone Star. They have mentoring and most impressive, eighty-eight percent of the alumni and current fellows who are in our second cohort have either been promoted or have taken leadership positions with their local professional support staff association and forty percent of the current cohort has been promoted or taken leadership positions with P S S A in the year they've been in the program and I think that's extraordinary. It talks both to the quality of the people who are in the cohort and to the program itself and I want to give a shout-out to Katie Halbert, who is the manager of this program and does a terrific job with it. She gives her heart and soul to this. So I'd like to ask the cohort, as I call your name to leap out of your feet. I've been waiting to say that all day. And be recognized and if the board is willing, when the meeting ends, the LEAP cohort would like to take picture with you, so stand by for that. So from LSC SciFare, Tom Thompson from Montgomery, Cara Castanon, Wendy Hadaway, and Kelly Matthews.
You're going to stand up, right?
Yeah.
You're leaping out of your feet. We're coming forward.
Who can leap the highest?
From North Harris, Kristy Biggers, Viana Nunez, and Wendy Palmer. From Tomball, Mary Derice Bruner. From University Park, Diane Brusseau, Cara Kane, Joakim Hussein, Sarah James, and Debbie Seidel. And from the System Office at the Woodlands and University Park, Ally Anderson, Teresa Benavides, Ricky Julig, Terry Bartlett Leonard, Patricia Mayo Bravo, Yolanda Perez, and John Taylor. Chancellor and trustees, I present to you the 2017 graduates of LSC LEAP.
How do you want the, you want them to line up and the board behind them? How do you want the pictures taken?
Yeah.
Do they want to be up here looking out that way and then the camera?
Can we do that now?
We can stand up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good job.
What else?
We're not ready for that yet.
Yeah.
Anything else under?
Under the workshop. Yeah, let's go on and then I'll combine mine.
Okay.
All right, at this point, we will approve the minutes of our meetings last month, we had three meetings and we will take a motion and act on each one separately. The first meeting was a public hearing on October the 2nd, 2017. May I have a motion to accept those minutes and a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second that we approve the minutes of our October 2nd special meeting, all those in favor vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. Lastly, the minutes of our October 12 special meeting, may I have a motion please? And second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly, second that we accept the minutes of October 12, all those in favor vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay, two abstentions, thank you. Okay, Dr. Head, I think you're back on with special reports and announcements.
Jennifer, do you want to, are you going to talk about the hurricane update now? Okay, why don't you do that? This is, I asked Jennifer to talk a little bit about kind of where we are and some of the challenges we have and talk about some of the timetables that we're looking at as a result of the hurricane. And then on the board agenda, we're, we are under, there's about five items, I think, dealing with Kingwood and we'll consider those separately and have more discussions about that when the time comes up. I'll have Jennifer come back up and talk to you about each one of those, so.
Okay, so an update where we're at is we have definitely been spending a lot of time with our consultants, GP strategies to work through the process to receive FEMA public assistance.
Jennifer, the, can you move the, yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, working towards FEMA public assistance, until this past October 10th, emergency purchases that were conducted are accepted by FEMA as being eligible for reimbursement, but that magic date was October 10th. So for anything after October 10th that we need to purchase, construction firms, electronic equipment, IT equipment, we need to use competitive procurement practices for those purchases to be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. We can no longer use emergency purchase procedures. So part of why this is important is just to understand rough Okay, Dr. Head, I think you're back on with special reports and announcements.
Jennifer, do you want to, are you going to talk about the hurricane update now? Okay, why don't you do that? This is, I asked Jennifer to talk a little bit about kind of where we are and some of the challenges we have and talk about some of the timetables that we're looking at as a result of the hurricane. And then, on the board agenda, we're, we are under, there's about five items, I think, dealing with Kingwood. And we'll consider those separately and have more discussions about that when the time comes up. I'll have Jennifer come back up and talk to you about each one of those, so.
Okay, so, an update where we're at is, we have definitely been spending a lot of time with our consultants, GP strategies, to work through the process to receive FEMA public assistance.
Jennifer, the, can you move the, yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go, okay. So, working towards FEMA public assistance, until this past October 10th, emergency purchases that were conducted are accepted by FEMA as being eligible for reimbursement. But that magic date was October 10th. So, for anything after October 10th that we need to purchase, construction firms, electronic equipment, IT equipment, we need to use competitive procurement practices for those purchases to be eligible for FEMA reimbursement. We can no longer use emergency purchase procedures. So, part of why this is important is just to understand rough numbers. I've mentioned previously that the total estimated cost of the damage system-wide is thirty million. And we have already received the ten million from insurance. So, of the balance, the twenty million remaining, I'm hoping for perhaps on average a sixty percent reimbursement from FEMA. So, we're talking about twelve million dollars that we might hope to ultimately receive in FEMA public assistance.
Which still leaves us eight million dollars. Sure.
Right. But, so for us to be able to get that twelve million dollars, we need to make sure we are following the FEMA procedures, even if our own policies and procedures would allow us to do otherwise. So, this is one of those things where operationally, I know, especially over at Kingwood, everyone wants to get everything replaced and reconstructed as quickly as possible. And there had, there are some instances where our own policies and procedures would allow us to declare some of these purchases emergency purchases. But unfortunately, that still means that they might not be eligible for FEMA reimbursement if we don't go through a full competitive procurement process. So, I say all that to explain why some of these timelines, I think, are not necessarily as fast as everyone would like. Because we have to go through issuing, request for proposals, receiving that in and evaluating them.
I want to make sure the board understands this because we're not being critical of FEMA because you saw what happened in Puerto Rico where they moved ahead and signed a three-hundred million-dollar deal. We, that's what they're trying to avoid and so we understand that. But, it's, it, it, you're gonna talk about delays at Kingwood and some of the, we're, this would be like you having damage at your house and you know the insurance company will pay for it, once they say that they'll pay for it. But if you move ahead and do it yourself, they may not pay for everything. And that's kind of, that's the dilemma that we have. And I talked to Dr. Smith earlier, from a business standpoint. And I know that, we talked to Catherine Pearson and her leadership team yesterday. I know we need to get in there. I know that. We want to get in there, but we have to be careful about what we're doing so that we don't make a bad short-term decision that has long-term implications for us. Because what we're talking about is, we either borrow money out of the savings, which reduces our, which endangers to me our AAA rating if we're not careful about that, or we spend money out of the bond, which right now, I don't think would take out of special projects. But we want to see where we are with that. We want to make sure that we get, we follow FEMA guidelines. And I want to point out, as I have several internal groups here, so, there is a process and FEMA's been fairly responsive. We've hired somebody for that. But FEMA is working on Houston, Florida, Puerto Rico. They're working on California with all the fires and they're working in the northeast right now because of all the storms that came through there. So, FEMA is overloaded right now. So, we, we're making progress, but keep going.
What kind of delay?
Yeah, so, the time, very, very rough timelines, right? Part of this is, so in the case of Kingwood, we do have an architect already, but we do not yet have a construction firm. But as it stands right now, the full, first, the full Kingwood reconstruction of the campus itself, I'm gonna say, is not gonna be complete until at least spring 2019, if not later.
So, we're talking about at the earliest, Catherine already knows this, she's not gonna fall out of her seat over there. Or she might, but the, we don't think we can get the college reopened again because of the timetables until January of 2019 at the earliest. That's about a year away. And if you look at what's been happening is, the more we got into it, the more extensive the damage is. And so, so for us now, on the competitive bidding part, we're gonna have to go back out and hire, we have the architect, but for the construction firms, we need to get back into our normal practices and policies. And that's, that'll take a couple of months, but even the construction piece is going to take twelve months, give or take?
Twelve to eighteen months for the actual construction.
More like take, or take a couple of months. It is what it is. So, there, I, I've been very complimentary of Catherine and her group, but I'm gonna continue to be complimentary of them because they took it yesterday with, I think they're all, we're all hoping for the best, but they've been prepared for the, what may or may not happen. They know, they know what situation is over there. So, we are offering all the help that we can. We've, we've told them, I mean, we're, we'll help them get leases, we'll move through our processes as fast as we can. But that's just the reality of the timetable. That's just what happens in the hurricane, so.
So, that's on the reconstruction. We have been working on trying to get them temporary classrooms. And there's two lease spaces, one for classrooms, one for temporary dental hygiene program. And then, we also are trying to get the, on the campus, the administration building and the second floor of the library open. So, those three locations, we've been working on to have temporary space for them. As it stands right now, those will not be complete until June of 2018. So, that's the current timeline for the temporary space. There, we do have a formal request into FEMA right now, asking them to authorize those as emergency purchases. We, we documented a lengthy case to them about needing, you know, at least temporary space for the spring. So, that formal letter is literally sitting in their office right now and we're hoping to get a response from them quickly. If they give us the authorization to do those as emergency purchases, then we could have those temporary classrooms ready February of 2018.
Now, that's temporary?
Temporary space.
That's not Lone Star facilities?
Well, but the, there's three locations, two locations are leases, not Lone Star property. The third location is, on the current campus, the administration building, which did not flood. And then also the second floor of the library. Those spaces on Lone Star property, we could use as temporary. Well, we could reopen those, you know, and cordon off student access to the rest of the campus.
Do we know the projected cost of the temporary property?
The architects are working on those cost estimates now. We hope to have them, if not tomorrow, early next week.
I was wondering whether that was greater than or less than the FEMA payments?
We, we actually talked about this yesterday. Once we know what that is and what the timetable for FEMA, we need to make a decision whether it'd be worth our time and then take a look at contact and reimbursement. I mean, some of this is just coming down to straight business decision over what's the least harmful to us. I, at the, at the top of our list is, we want to, we want, we need to get students back in school. And I know that in talking to Catherine and talk to the Faculty Senate President Anthony, we know people are all cooped up in little spaces and it's a, I mean, it's a hardship on everybody right now, and we know that. I, I think if I had to list them, it's getting our students back in school on a regular basis and then our employees, right, where's Anthony? Saw you in there someplace. Oh, you're right there. We know that employees are cooped up. That, that's not a good situation over the long term. I mean, yeah, what do you have? You have about fifteen people working in a little tiny office about the size of that boardroom in there?
I'm gonna show pictures a little while.
And I know, as much as we like being around everybody, if you had to be around them a lot every day, that'd be not a healthy situation, so. So, we're gonna take a look at that to answer your questions. So, we had that discussion yesterday, so.
So, that's where we are on timeline. Financially, I think I've mentioned before, we have been tracking all Harvey-related expenditures. It's, it's called Fund 35, but it's a fund that allows us to segregate these expenditures from our typical operating and auxiliary funds. So, it's a restricted fund and just puts everything in one place. Beginning next month, I'm going to begin including financial statements for that fund with the monthly financial report, so you can see all the activity that's going on in that fund. But where we're at right now in that fund, as of September 30th, is, we did recognize the ten million dollars in revenues, which is the insurance proceeds. And then, so far, as of September 30th, we had expenditures of four hundred and twenty thousand. Now, I know that's not a lot, but that's just the invoices that got paid by September 30th. There's already at least, I know, one one-point-eight million dollar payment that's occurred in October, just one that I know of off the top of my head. So, when I come next month with the financial statements, you'll begin to see those expenditures.
So, for the board, we will have every dollar accounted for that we spent for Kingwood in that Fund 35 account. That was set up for that so that we can monitor that and know. So, I mean, part of, part of what we're doing here, and we had some preliminary discussions yesterday and we'll be talking with presidents more and vice chancellors about lessons learned, how we can be better prepared the next time, even though it's tough to be prepared for forty-five inches of rain. But, we've learned lessons about communication, dealing with insurance companies, the way we deal with FEMA, insurance companies, attorneys that are involved. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving pieces to this that you may not think about with your house. If you can imagine your house having a claim and then multiplying that times a lot, that's kind of where we are. So, we're talking about thirty million dollars worth of damage here, so.
I don't know, I also have some updates on the, from the appraisal districts?
Yes. Yes.
So, we've continued to reach out to both Montgomery County Appraisal District and Harris County Appraisal District on their ongoing efforts to do the reappraisals. For, beginning with Montgomery County, they have, they're expecting their field reviews to be completed by mid-November and then they're gonna be sending out notices of value to the affected property owners. But with that timeline, they're not gonna be able to certify, so for those taxing jurisdictions that have authorized this, they're not gonna get certified values until the end of December, if not after January 1, 2018. But Montgomery County has inspected almost sixty-four thousand properties and thirty-six hundred have been identified as having damage.
Say it again? I saw that in your report, but they need to hear that, so, sixty, go ahead.
Almost, so sixty-four thousand, almost, properties, oh, there's six, almost sixty-four thousand properties to inspect. They have inspected so far sixty-two thousand. So, they inspected most of them and so far, they've identified thirty-six hundred properties with damage. This is in all of Montgomery County. So far, the ones that are in our taxing jurisdiction is at about thirty-three hundred, just in the Montgomery County portion. But there's still another sixteen hundred in our jurisdiction that hasn't been inspected yet. So, from that, if you assume a fifty percent loss in home value, we, it looked like it would impact tax revenues at about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Lone Star College tax revenues and that would be a taxpayer savings of about fifty dollars. And then the reappraisal itself, the Lone Star College share of that cost, if we were to do that, is twenty-seven thousand. So, for the Montgomery portion, Montgomery County portion, that's about two hundred and seventy-five thousand of costs.
But keep in mind, we can't separate the counties, so this is, okay, number two is the big one, so go ahead.
So, I'm going on to Harris County. Right, so for Harris County, just to go through, they have received some resolutions there, but they're largely from smaller taxing entities, Spring Branch ISD, City of Katy, Woodlands Township, Mud 386, and the City of Shore Acres. And Harris County so far has reviewed over a hundred and sixty thousand parcels, fifty-five thousand of which were identified as receiving damage. But the number of parcels in Lone Star College taxing area within Harris County is over five hundred and seventy-eight thousand parcels. So, the appraisal district estimated for us that if that percentage of damaged properties remains consistent, roughly that percentage, then the cost of reappraisal to us would be between five and six million dollars to do the reappraisal.
I want to make sure everybody understands that. So, if we participate in that reappraisal, it's a five or six million dollar, our cost of that is five to six million in Harris County, plus the other two-seventy-five that we would do.
And that still does not include, we don't still have a good estimate of what the impact on the property values would be.
So, the issue for us is, right now, we don't have enough information to even, outside of giving you information, that's all we have. And so, ultimately, we'll have to have a discussion. What I think is gonna happen is that the, I, right now, I just don't see us doing anything. We, we can't do anything in this year, so it would, I think the impact is going to be the following year, where if there's a decline in appraised values or whatever may happen, I think that's really what we're talking about. You see the numbers in there, they're huge, plus just the timing on it. So, we will be prepared for next year. We've already been working on next year's budget and being prepared for, I still think assessed value will increase, but at a very low rate, lower, much lower rate than what we've been seeing in the past. So, we'll be ready for it financially, one way or another, so.
Amazing.
So, we're, right now, in terms of the hurricane, I think we're doing everything that we can do, kind of operationally and educationally. I know, Kingwood has got all sorts of things going on over there and sometime, sometime maybe, I don't know about December, but maybe we'll give an update on, maybe after you start school, where we are with everything again. Because they've, they've really got to go back and, she's got to be very innovative and Catherine's always been innovative and creative anyway, but, let me, creative in a good term. You've been creative with some other things too, but we'll say creative in that. But, I mean, that's just what it takes right now. Everybody's really, I'm very proud of Kingwood. I mean, I, everybody's trying to help them the best way they can, but they, they have to do this themselves, so, okay?
Thank you, Mike.
So, I've got one more, it's really not an announcement, it's not an action item for the board, but at the, I wanted the, really, the people in the audience and bring the board up to date with a couple of issues. And our number-one challenge for some time has been the, I think, disparity in student success across our system. So, we have parts of our system down in the south part in particular, where the average income is, household income is about twenty-eight thousand. If you come up in the Woodlands, it's almost a hundred and ten thousand. So, the, the areas that we've really been focused on, and you know, we've made African-American success a priority, but, once you get past Anglo's success, then everything drops off after that. The areas of the most concern for us have been the centers south of Beltway 8, especially, if I'll just kind of go in order here, Greenspoint, Victory, if I go all the way over to Fairbanks, and then taking a look at East Aldine, which will be coming up in six or eight months or a year, a year, give or take? Fall of nineteen. So, we have about fifty-six hundred students enrolled over there right now, fifty-six and fifty-eight hundred students enrolled in those four centers, three centers, then we'll have East Aldine coming up, that's projected to be fourteen, fourteen hundred students or so. So, it's the, that's the lowest income. It's areas, it is the lowest educational attainment, the highest poverty rates, the highest people on food stamps. We have the declining enrollment at the centers. And over the last four years, the enrollments have been declining. We've been losing students, especially on weekends. And so, what I think is that, and I've been talking with Dr. Napolos and Dr. Keshvala about this, and I've had a number of forums, if we don't do something different, we're not gonna make progress there. And that's, and I, I told some of you and I think, I told the board that, to me, this is, it's an educational issue, but it's also a moral, ethical issue for us, that, to me, the areas that need us the most, we need to step up the most and do what we can and I don't, we're not gonna make progress there unless we change what we've been doing. So, what I had talked to the board in the last meeting was, and the reason I'm mentioning this tonight, is that we talked about the creation of a seventh college, which would be combining the centers of Greenspoint, Victory, Fairbanks, and then when East Aldine opens up, we would put that in there. So, it's not a stretch to do this, but I think that they need more attention. What's happening when we go to the centers is, the per capita expenditure at the centers is about twelve hundred per student. At the colleges, it's twenty-two hundred, and that includes the twelve hundred. So, you can see kind of the disparities there. Now, having said that, it's not apples for apples, because I know the colleges provide support, but the faculty ratios are a little lower than what they should be. And I know the, I know that the colleges, I know, because I was there, they send full-time faculty down to help, but that's, the issue for me is if we don't do something innovative and creative. And what we're talking about are smaller classes, cohorts, block scheduling, shorter classes, like eight weeks. There are a number of initiatives and programs in some schools in the country, and there are not very many colleges that do this. Very few really zeroing in on, on the socioeconomic issues that we're talking about here. And it's a resource issue, it's just a willingness to do it, we can do it. And so, I've made the proposal to the board that we move forward with this. I have asked Dr. Quentin Wright to head up our efforts in this. And Quentin, would you stand up so that everybody knows who you are? I know some of them do, some of them don't. So, Quentin, you know, was the vice president over at Tomball. He has been a special assistant. He has been a special assistant to the chancellor. I just didn't wake up one day and thought we needed to do this. I actually made the proposal on this, I talked to the previous chancellor about seven or eight years ago about this. I thought it needed to be done, so that if, if we don't focus on these students, I don't think we're going to make much more progress than we have. And so, what I see is this, this gap that we have, when I, I mentioned before, that the success rates for white students is about seventy-three percent or so. For African-American students, it's, for females, it's in the sixties, for males, it's in the fifties. For Hispanics, it's lower than it is for Anglo's. So, we clearly can do a better job than what we've been doing. I know they could do better, because I was the president over at North Harris, where we worked on this a lot, and Dr. Lamer's not in here, but I know we can do better than what we've been doing. It takes a lot of effort, though, and it takes a concentrated effort and resources. We're talking about being very innovative and creative and a different kind of faculty load, where they would be participating with students. We, we would also, when I say block scheduling, we want to mandate to students that when you come in here, this is what you're going to do. Because they don't even know what they don't know. And so, this is all to try to help them. So, that's kind of where we are with that. And I'll come back to the board periodically. The, the next process of this is that we would seek SACS approval. I'm not, I'm not worried about that, they will approve that. And then, we know that we've got some resource issues. Jennifer and I have already been working on the budget for next year, so there's a, there's a gap in there, but we would cover that gap in a three- or four-year period to make sure that, that college would have the resources it needs. So, I think, I have to tell you, I think it's a great opportunity for us to do the right thing here. I know we have the in-house personnel to take care of this. I mean, so, we have a memo going out to employees, telling them they don't need to worry about their jobs. I don't want to get into that, that's a different discussion. The question is, we want them to join in in kind of this creative, innovative place that we think can make a difference in their success. So, that's where we are. Just want to update the board over there and make sure everybody in here, we have not told the general public that yet, so. But, a memo is going out in just a few minutes or later about what we're planning on doing, because once I say it in here, that's, it's, I can see some of you right now looking at your iPhone, texting things to people. Which is a good thing. I mean, I, I have to tell you, I'm, I think the possibilities for this, very few colleges are willing to do this. And so, I've asked Dr. Wright to, I want him to be thinking, and all of us to be thinking about what we can do to improve student success in that area and help those students in the community be successful. That's, that's why we're here, that's why we work at Lone Star, so.
Yeah, well, Dr. Head, I would like to say that personally, I admire the way you attack problems, you know, and make things happen. And I want to relay a story. This past weekend, I was over at Jack Yates High School, and Jack Yates is located between Texas Southern University and U of H. So, we had about a hundred-and-twenty-five high school students. And my first question to them, Helen gave me great data, you know, to present to those individuals, my first question to that group was, how many of you all are involved or enrolled in dual credit classes? And you would be shocked at the number out of that one hundred that raised their hand. There was only one student in the whole group that ever heard of, which I found shocking. So, when you say sometimes folks don't know what they don't know, unfortunately, those students happen to be individuals that don't know anyone that ever gone to college, even though they're in between two different colleges. So, I'm happy to see us attacking issues, and as Kyle indicated, I'm going to pick on Kyle a while, he said at the last meeting that an education is cheaper than a trip to Huntsville, meaning that prison is more expensive. So, keep up the good work, and thank you for your innovativeness in the educational arena. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Think next is the president's report, huh? Dr. Adeline.
Doctor.
All right, doctor. What do you want us to call you from now on?
I'm just the same Sean. I told my team, which several of them are here, I'm the same Sean as you knew almost ten years ago, so.
Okay.
It's an honor. On a personal note, thank you very much, Dr. Head and the board for their support, and of course, my colleagues. If it wasn't for Dr. Head, I wouldn't be in this program, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your mentorship and also for helping me throughout with, with the scholarship. Thank you. As the board, as you mentioned, and we talked about it, it's all about students, so it's very convenient that the title is about every student at Lone Star College is an achiever. So, I'd like to, to tell a few stories of our students. Always the focus, the big picture, as, as the chancellor has mentioned, is about what is at the core of our mission, which is about social justice and upward mobility. So, then, how we do it, let's, let's just think for a minute about the past ten years. How many students, how many lives, what you are doing, have we touched? And let's talk about ten years. If on average, we had maybe fifty, sixty thousand students, that's six-hundred thousand students. Every student also touches and impacts about three other people, so that's two-point-four million students that you have touched, but what we do and what my colleagues and everybody in this room does, so it's a good number when we talk about it. The reports that we run talk about the economic impact, let's say this past year was three-point-one billion dollars of Lone Star College system. And Amos does that report on annual basis many times. So, let's just talk about maybe on average for the past ten years, maybe two billion dollars. That's a twenty-billion-dollar impact to the community that we serve. So, every way you look at it, we have a great story to tell to, to the community and to our students. But the title of my presentation at first was Six Stories in Six Minutes. So, I will go through them as fast as I can, and I know at least one of our trustees would like to hear this. The student here is the one to my left, you know, it's very easy to, to confuse the president with the student. But in here, we're talking about one of students at Lone Star College at Cyfair. Danielle is a first-generation student that was accepted at Texas A&amp;M and UT Austin, but was recruited and decided to come to Lone Star College Cyfair. She came, and she did, again, as a first-time student, she did very well, graduated, and received an eighty-thousand-dollar scholarship to go to the most prestigious engineering school in France. So, again, this is the highest and the only one in the United States that has received this honor, one of our students at Cyfair. Everything at Kingwood is about family, so here is another story about Kingwood. Harold and Frances graduated high school in nineteen-sixty-one. After fifty-five years of marriage and retirement, their daughter convinced them, Debbie convinced them to come back and go to LSC Kingwood. So, they, all, all three of them graduated together last May, father, mother, and, and daughter, all of them, in May seventeen, they graduated from Kingwood, another family's success story. Bailey at, at North Harris, very active in the African-American club, a member of PTK, was selected with a three-point-eight GPA at North Harris. He was selected by, to go to the NASA Glenn Research Center in Ohio for one week of training on there with the astronauts and building robots to compete with other students. There are only three hundred students in the country that were selected, two of them were from Lone Star. But they go there and they train, and they compete with students from all over the country. He, he's going to be graduating and going to Texas A&amp;M as an engineer. At Montgomery, here is Israel, that also, the first thing that he did after he finished kindergarten, begged mom to buy him a multiplication book. He loves math, and he showed it. And also, he had a hard time at high school. When everybody was going home, Israel had to stay, not to celebrate or play ball. He stayed to work as the janitor at his own school. So, he graduated, and he also received two associate degrees from, from Montgomery, and received the Terry Foundation, going to University of Houston for an, as an engineering Crystalin, hopefully I didn't mess up her name, did not have an easy life, from Tomball. She is one of the four, and also a surrogate mother, because her mother, their mother is on a wheelchair and is handicapped. So, she has to raise her three siblings, plays basketball, arranges for all the little kids to go to their school, to go to all the activities and everything. She works part-time, but also she's a full-time student at Tomball. To top it up, she became homeless, the whole family became homeless for eighteen months. During all this time, she still came to school every day. She still kept a, a full-time job, and also kept her GPA up. She's going to finish in two thousand and eighteen, she's also a basketball player, and she is going, and she has been accepted to Lamar University to study nursing. And those of you who were at my graduation met Amar. Amar wanted to graduate college before he graduated high school. Before his freshman year in high school, he started taking AP courses. And despite his disability, that he has a hard time with speech and also hearing, many trips to Boston Children's Hospital for, for surgery. He finished last year with a four-point-O and graduated from Lone Star College. On his summers, he worked as a paid intern at the Baylor School of Medicine, and meanwhile, also in the summer between his trips, between his surgeries, he took quantum physics from Harvard, and he plans to go there as a student. So, again, another great success story of our students. So, hopefully I finished all this six in six minutes. I appreciate it. You have, again, two-point-six million of these, and just in the past four years, I appreciate all of you. Questions?
Dr. Howard Smith, are you next? Come on up.
You want to talk about the award first?
I will, yes. I'm really excited to share this, Dr. Head. Lone Star College was nominated by the Texas Diversity Council Staff and Gulf Coast Advisory Board for a twenty-seventeen Corporate Commitment Diversity First Award, and this award was for unfailing commitment to diversity and inclusion. There was a special luncheon held on October twenty-sixth, and we were there to receive the award and are excited to share it with you all tonight.
Good.
Thank you.
So, I ask Alicia to give an overview, we have a SACS five-year accreditation visit, and so, some of you may not be clear about the purpose of SACS and what they do and what we have to do. And keep in mind that this is not the ten, we have visits every ten years, but this is a five-year visit, and we have a number of centers that have been opening. And then, as we talk about this other college, we have to get, we have to fill out what's called a prospectus, and then we have to fill out quite a extensive, we have to do work for anything that we do new, and make sure that we follow their guidelines for accreditation purposes. So, then we know what needs to be done, it's just a matter of doing it. There's a lot of work that involves this, so I ask her to go through this with you.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Perfect introduction. Thank you again, and good evening Chairman Smith, Dr. Head, and of course, the Board of Trustees. I'm really pleased, as you can tell, to have the opportunity to update you on the work that we're doing with SACS. And as Dr. Head has already said, it's a great deal of work that happens, not just during our fifth year or tenth year, but during the years in between, and we'll share some of that with you. I'll also have an opportunity to update you on our most recent submission of our fifth year interim report, and of course, all of the subsequent preparation that's gone into preparing for our upcoming visit. The two most frequently asked questions, or at least two most frequently used terms when discussing accreditation and reaccreditation processes are the words varied and complex. And I'd like to start with that tonight. All of the things that you see on the slide before you, some of the variety of things that are involved in substantive changes are certainly varied and very complex, and they occur throughout the year. At the center of that, however, are quality and improvement, and the focus of all accreditation is really maintaining quality and ongoing improvements. Accreditation grew out of an interest really in improving accountability across the nation for higher ed, and achieving outcomes, again, in quality and improvements on an ongoing basis. What's been very interesting is that the coordinating board and SACS both define accreditation in much the same way. They see it as an opportunity for an institution to assure that its purpose is appropriate for higher education, obviously, but most importantly, that they have the sufficient resources to accomplish those two goals that I just mentioned to you, ongoing quality and ongoing improvement. It's a collegial process, and what that basically means is that it works not only internally with assessment that we will do in terms of self-assessment, but also externally with peer review, and I'll share some more about how that actually works in a moment. As a regional accreditor, SACS provides guidance to all of the states that you see there that are in the southern region. Having worked with middle states accreditation and the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation, and now with SACS, what is consistent across each of the accrediting bodies are these building blocks that you see before you. Their commitment, obviously, is to institutional integrity, the adherence to core and federal requirements, as well as to core principles and standards, which serve as really the foundation of any good accreditation practice. If you take a look at this next slide, it's an example of the core requirements and standards that will be reviewed during our upcoming visit, which will be taking place on the thirteenth through the fifteenth of this month. And as you can see, SACS will be focusing attention on integrity. We'll also be focusing discussions around a key requirement and standards as it relates to personnel, facilities, resources, student services, and certainly, most importantly, institutional effectiveness. As Dr. Head said, the two primary reports that you often hear about when discussing accreditation will be your reaffirmation report or your tenth year report, and certainly the fifth year report, or often called the interim report. The fifth year interim is usually followed by a visit, and this visit occurs to assure that all of the new sites added since the reaffirmation are in compliance with the standards and regulations that I mentioned earlier. As you can see, that we had our last reaffirmation in two thousand and twelve. Our visit, our interim visit will occur again the thirteenth through the fifteenth of this month. During this upcoming visit, it's going to be very important, obviously, that we prep our instructional sites, off-campus sites, to be ready for that, and I'll share with you how we've gone about that process as well. As we think about that fifth year interim report, let me show you this slide. At the time of that submission, it was really important that we not only attest to institutional integrity, and you're going to hear that word a lot throughout the presentation, but we also had to provide a very detailed institutional summary, as well as review our quality enhancement plan. And as you know, our quality enhancement plan is a plan that's focused on improving the learning environment for our first-in-college students. Within that report, we also provided compliance certifications and a review of all off-campus sites added since the reaffirmation, and that was done in preparation for the upcoming Dr. Trina Botler, she's Vice President of Economic Development at Chattahoochee Technical College, and she will be serving as the chair for our upcoming visit, and she'll be joined by other members from throughout our southern region to evaluate Lone Star College for a three-day period. They'll have an opportunity to visit the locations, work with our faculty, staff, and our students to assess compliance with the regulations, as I mentioned previously. So, they'll tour the facilities, they'll meet with staff, and they'll also have an opportunity to ask questions of administrators as well. Now, since our last reaffirmation, we've added a number of sites. At last count, we've added nineteen new locations since the two thousand and twelve reaffirmation. Of the nineteen sites that have been added, SACS has decided to visit Of the nineteen sites that have been added, SACS has decided to visit only nine of them. So the sites they're gonna be visiting are gonna be sites that are a combination of both the high school sites as well as center sites. And they're listed in front of you. Really excited to share with you about the process of preparing for the visit. It's been a very detailed and very involved process and we're quite, quite pleased with the outcomes thus far. Mike Crawl, my Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs and the site preparation team, actually developed a comprehensive site preparation process that includes multiple site visits. So they're actually going to the sites in advance of the visit to meet with the faculty and staff, to actually prep them for the ongoing discussions that will happen the thirteenth through the fifteenth.
Mike, let him, let him hold up the wave so that the board knows.
Wait, Mike, I'm sorry, please stand.
Mike is our chief, chief academic officer on that side. He reports to Alicia, but he's, he's the person that does a lot of the, well, probably most of the work, like ninety-five percent of it for SACS, so.
Thank you, Mike. As I said, they will be visiting and have visited multiple sites to kind of get the team ready. They've also developed an extensive process review that's included providing informational resources, a guide that literally asks key questions for site preparation. And I think the most important part of the preparation process that he and the team have executed has been the fact that they've done mock visits to demystify the process for our faculty, staff, and students and to really get them prepped. So I'm really proud of that. Wanted to share this. A key component of the mock visits I just mentioned is an opportunity to actually review some of the questions that are most likely to be asked during the visit. And so here are examples of some of the questions, and this is just obviously a very, very small number of maybe a hundred-plus possibilities that could be asked during the site visit. As you look at question one, as it relates to personnel, this is really just an opportunity for the visiting team to assess if off-site faculty are evaluated using the same Lone Star College policies and principles. So there's an opportunity to hear that from them directly. As we look at the second question, it allows the visiting team to determine if there are adequate facilities in order to conduct the classes, particularly for our high schools as we think about dual credit. Question three, very basic, it's an opportunity to look at how students will really access resources on the off-campus sites. How will we make that possible and ensure that the learning process is somewhat seamless for them? I'd like to share with you a very, very quick video of a site preparation meeting as well.
You look very professional there. I just very impressed.
As said earlier, our relationship, obviously, with SACS is a very important relationship. I would say it's critical. And in addition to all of the work that obviously goes into preparing for a tenth year visit and for the interim visit, again, there's a number of things that happen throughout the year that I think are important for you to know, as Dr. Head mentioned. For example, one of the things that's probably really important and certainly triggers an immediate reaction from Lone Star to our creditors is when there's a new program or a new site proposed. This will obviously automatically trigger for Lone Star College the submission of either a notification or a prospectus. The same is true for temporary sites. You might think recently, as we had to get the operations onboard for our Kingwood location, there was a great deal of work that went into getting approvals to make sure that that could happen. And so when that type of thing happens, requests for temporary sites, it's an automatic response to work with SACS. Also, level changes and closures are often just key triggers for substantive changes. It's really important. And so if you think about the intent for us to offer the BAT and the BSN, so obviously there's work that's happening in the background to prepare for the ability for Lone Star to do that. Each of these actions on the part of the institution requires strict adherence to, obviously, accreditation standards and guidelines. The System Office of Academic Affairs is accountable for all SACS communications and submissions. And we recently updated our substantive change procedures and processes to improve efficiency. So we're really excited by that as well. Quality. Quality is never an accident. It's always a result of high intention, sincere effort, intelligent direction, and skillful execution. It represents the wise choice of many alternatives. This quote by William A. Foster nicely sums up the general intent of the work of the Lone Star College SACS Committee and Preparation Team. I think it also affirms the path forward with continuous quality improvement and institutional effectiveness, as I mentioned earlier. I'd like to, again, take a moment to thank Mike Crawl and his team, certainly the SACS Committee and Preparation Team, for all of their efforts, tremendous efforts, actually, in preparing for the upcoming visit.
Can you make sure, so there's Mike, I saw Chris back there someplace.
Yes, I believe some of them have attended, so if you're on the SACS team.
Oh, there he is, way back there. Chris, you wanna let people know who you are? Chris T. Cat. You got the committee here, that's the Deborah Rockefeller over there. So this is the SACS Committee that's working on all that. There's a lot of work that goes on here, so thank you all for your, for your hard work here. Before Deborah Rockefeller kills me, would you, because I saw that look on her face, would you tell people what she does with SACS, her SACS involvement and what her role is?
I tell you, Deborah does a great deal of work. Deborah, I don't see you, but I know you're here. If you could stand and raise it. If you can.
Just so we're clear about this, I'd already realized I didn't mention your name before you looked at me. So I was looking around for you because I'd seen you before.
Well, I'll tell you what Deborah does. She actually is very instrumental in our substantive change process. So you saw me mention those things that trigger reports from Lone Star. Well, Deborah is actually the impetus for getting a number of those reports, if not all of those reports done. So as we look at substantive changes for new programs, new sites, Deborah is key to making, to making that happen. So Deborah, thank you so much. That concludes my presentation, actually. So unless there are questions, I'd be honored to answer them at this time.
I have one question. You may have answered this, but I think you said that the visit will take place November thirteenth through fifteenth.
Correct. Yes, sir.
When will we get their final answer? How long, what's the timeline?
It's a great question. On the fifteenth, they will do an exit interview with us, so we'll have a sense of what their thoughts are on the fifteenth. And so it will take them probably, it's usually three months before a final report comes to us. And so we have a board meeting with SACS in December, so we'll have a sense at that point as well, but the final report is usually three months after the visit.
But there is an exit interview, so we'll have pretty much an idea as they're leaving over major, major issues and then they come back with a lot of.
Correct.
Okay. I'll know the answer the next time around. It's my first time.
Yeah, so on the fifteenth, we'll have some idea and three months thereafter, we'll have the formal report in the chancellor's hands.
Keep us posted.
Do you determine, I have a question. You mentioned the, the new programs and how that is part of the process. I know that as a board member, I've often heard, when I've asked questions about doing things a new way or different, or trying out new things, how important it is, of course, we have to abide by the accreditation requirements and all those. Does it allow the process for, you know, waivers or, or exceptions to programming, the way we do things and stuff? I mean, and I only say that because of the fact that we're, we're about to implement something probably very, very innovative. We're trying to get ahead of the curve in many respects. So I wanna see, is there a way for, does that allow for that?
I, I would say that SACS provides a framework for how we should operate and that framework will include key principles and requirements and standards. We typically have to operate around those, but there is room for creativity and innovation. And when in question, we would contact our VP at SACS and they would guide us through that process. They actually encourage innovation and creativity. We just simply have to make sure that whatever we're doing will adhere to those two things I had in the center, that's quality and continuous improvement.
And does that include personnel qualifications or requirements?
Well, they're, they're pretty, pretty clear on those.
I'm sure, I'm sure. But if there's any new ideas or new approaches and stuff, maybe.
Yeah, I, I would say that they're open to innovation around the parameters that they provide. As it relates to credentialing, which is the question you're asking, I, I think there's far less wiggle room, but I will tell you what I do. When in doubt, I pick up the phone and I make a call.
I was gonna say, before we get too creative and innovative, we will check with them, we will check with them first to make sure that that's their.
That's correct, that's correct.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Head.
We're checking with them on the Bachelor of Applied Technology and the Bachelor of Science and nursing, to make sure we're in adherence to their guidelines. I mean, it's, we work, we work closely, they're in touch with them a lot, so we all are, so.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. If there are no other questions?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony, I believe you are next. What's your last name, Anthony? I'm sorry.
Carreras.
Dr. Carreras.
I really entered. Sure did.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. A little tall here. Chair Smith, Chancellor Head, members of the board, good evening. As you know, these have not been ordinary times at Lone Star College Kingwood and I'd like to speak to you tonight about how we've been doing there at Kingwood, particularly about how our faculty and staff have pulled together during this pretty crazy time. But first, I thought I'd start with a little ancient Greek philosophy.
Of course.
Goodness. Aristotle argued that being a virtuous person is essentially about having both the correct, shall we say, rational responses to situations in which we find ourselves and, shall we say, the correct emotional responses to situations in which we find ourselves. So not only does the virtuous person know or understand what the right thing to do is in a tough situation, that's having the correct rational response, but the virtuous person also has a certain emotional response that is in sync with that knowledge. It doesn't fight it, it harmonizes with it. And Aristotle famously thought that it was possible to have these emotional responses to too great or too deficient a degree and that having the virtuous state of character was to be disposed to have these responses to just the right degree, between the two extremes of excess and efficiency, what you've probably heard referred to as the golden mean, that comes from Aristotle. To take an example of one of Aristotle's virtues, generosity. If I'm generous, then not only do I know that I ought to give, say, two hundred dollars to Harvey relief, but I also have a positive emotional response to doing so. My feelings aren't fighting my knowledge, pushing me in the direction of not giving, but neither are they playing too supportive of a role, say, causing me to give more than I have. And this is difficult, as Aristotle emphasized, it's hard to train ourselves to always have these emotional responses that are so appropriately calibrated. And it's hard to know what the right thing to do is. All this takes practice, which over time leads to what Aristotle called practical wisdom. Based on what I've seen Lone Star College's Kingwood go through in the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey, I can tell you with great confidence that there is no one more virtuous than our college president, Dr. Catherine Pearson. Now, if you're a college president and you learn that six of your nine campus buildings have taken on two or three feet of water or more, water in which there's raw sewage, diesel, dead fish, and God knows what else floating around, while classes are supposed to start in less than a week, well, there's lots of different rational and emotional responses you might have to that. And Dr. Pearson had just the right ones. We had a problem and she saw the solution in offering as many face-to-face classes as we possibly could between our satellite centers, our non-flooded campus buildings, our sister colleges, thanks to the, our generous friends across the system, and our leased spaces, and moving the rest of our courses online. I know that it pains Dr. Pearson more than anyone to see the damage that Harvey had wrought on our college. For those of you who may not know, she's a founding faculty member of the college and has longstanding ties to the community. No one took this as hard as she did. But through this all, Dr. Pearson has been a rock. She's been cool and collected and indefatigable. Although some of us do worry a little bit about how much sleep she's getting when her daily update emails come in at about three or four AM, I cannot imagine that there are many other tests of leadership as great as this. And it was that leadership that inspired us all at Kingwood to get rolling and make this semester, make this year, make what's going to be three semesters work. The week after Harvey, Dr. Pearson called a college-wide meeting at First Presbyterian Church in Kingwood to lay out the plan and rally the troops. There were over four hundred employees in attendance who gave a rousing standing ovation at the meeting's conclusion and then we got to work. So what you see on your screen here are the before, it's the before and after shot of our percentages and numbers of face-to-face, hybrid, and online classes. So as you can see, we had to move a significant portion of our classes to online. What's not pictured there, but what the math implies, there were about four hundred and ninety-seven sections that were originally fully face-to-face that had to be converted to fully online. In addition, we had to convert our sixteen-week schedule to a twelve-week with a September twenty-fifth start date. Our eight-week classes became six-week. And in between Harvey and our new start date of September twenty-fifth, instructional leaders and faculty had three weeks to pull that off. And now, a great many of our faculty have experienced teaching online. For them, this was not a huge hurdle. But many of our faculty, both full-time and adjunct, had not taught online before and for them, this has been a very new experience and no doubt for some folks, this seemed like a daunting prospect. But I can tell you that what occurred during those three weeks and what continues to occur now was an astonishingly organized, dedicated, collective effort to get all our online classes up and running and to get our faculty trained. I saw this firsthand, not only am I faculty center president, I'm also department chair of Philosophy, History, Humanities, and Geography, so I've been right there in the thick of it. Our Professional Development Director, Kaylee Von der Voor, has tirelessly led the charge of training our faculty, preparing them to teach online. Each of our five divisions appointed two faculty members considered to be experts in online teaching to be integral parts of this training. Basically, each and every day, all day, we offered training sessions at both the Atascocita and MCIT centers, beginning that second week of September. And those two division reps, in East Division, not only ran those sessions, but, I mean, they went to faculty members' houses, they talked to faculty members on the phone, they were available on the spot, I don't wanna say twenty-four hours a day, but through all hours to talk to people as they needed stuff, and they continue to do that sort of thing. Other faculty members across the college helped out as well. Several of our experienced online faculty, online instructors, created things like live video tutorials. For those who had conflicts, couldn't attend some of the sessions, in which they would walk a new online instructor through some aspect of D2L, offer tips on online pedagogy and so on and so forth. What you see on your screen here is just a typical example, it's just a typical week of what online training looked for us. What you see here happens to be, happened to be the week of September eighteenth, but this is pretty much what it's looked like every week and we're still doing this kind of thing and people are still coming in for this. So here I have some numbers to share with you. So these stats are for faculty training and support visits at the Atascocita and MCIT centers combined. These are, these numbers are current as of this past Friday, so they're almost a week old. But as of then, we had a total, total visit, six hundred and thirty-three, one hundred and sixty-nine unique visitors, and we got three hundred and ten D2L online teaching certifications out of it. We're very proud of these numbers. And of course, we've been holding the same kind of sessions for our students, many of whom are not accustomed to taking on. whom are not accustomed to taking online classes. Our faculty are very cognizant of this. The faculty members who are teaching classes now that are fully online, that used to be fully faced, started out as fully face-to-face, are offering as many face-to-face opportunities as they can. For example, our full-time instructor in economics regularly goes to North Harris, as I understand it, to run like one-to-three-hour study sessions. So in short, our faculty have been going the extra mile. And I'm not surprised, having been at Kingwood now for almost six years, having been faculty senate president for more than a year, I know that we have some very, very motivated and dedicated faculty who are of the mindset, "I'm going to get the job done." Now, this kind of motivation and dedication can manifest itself in some entertaining ways, I'll say. A couple days after the flooding, I got a phone call from two faculty members, I'm paraphrasing here, but they more or less said the same thing. They said, "Anthony, listen, we shouldn't be sitting here at home. It makes no sense for us to be here at home. We should be out there in the buildings helping clean up, right? I'll sign a waiver. I'll put on a hazmat suit. And I'll get in there and get my hands dirty, right? I'll help clean up." And I sort of felt this was misguided, but well-meeting, and I kind of had to address it at our September faculty senate meeting. I had a carefully worded agenda item on there called, "Why Starting a Relationship With Raw Sewage Is Not a Good Thing to Do Even If You Wear Protection." So even though this has resulted in the temporary loss of most of our campus, I think in some ways this experience has brought us closer together. I know that it has brought us literally closer together. We've been working in some closer spaces, so these are some of, some photos of how things kind of look right now at Kingwood. This is our OTF staff, OTF staff right here. And here in the, this is in the MCIT center, so this room right here, right now, houses all of our instructional staff, all our DOMs, our division operation managers, and our division operation specialists are all working in this one room over here at the MCIT center. And over here, that table right there has been where our jeans and our VPI go to work every day. This is, this is where they've been doing their thing, and they've been, they've been doing it, and they've been doing it tirelessly.
Was Oscar wearing that Astros outfit before they got into playoffs, or? Oscar's the guy with the glasses on, sunglasses?
Oscar's diehard Astros, so yes. I'm also happy to report that we've been able to maintain many of the key events that have always been a big part of our culture and morale at Kingwood. So for example, we had our first community food fair in October, two more planned this semester. So this community food fair is an event that, it's a partnership with the Ullam Area Assistant Ministries. It started about two years ago as a leadership program project created by Brenda Stubbs, faculty member, and Gary Winn. It quickly evolved into a monthly event, usually financed by one group or individual with many student and faculty volunteers, employee volunteers. So on October 12th, we had 400 food boxes that were packed and distributed to 310 families, serving 1,439 individuals. We had 54 volunteers, clocking 170 volunteer hours, 38 Lone Star College, Kingwood participants. Our drama and performing arts department, Harvey really hit them hard. All their equipment was located on the first floor of the PAC building, all flooded, or most of their equipment, I should say, vast majority of it. And how did they respond? Only by recently completing a sold-out four-night run of the play Dracula. Luckily, our music building did not flood, and the recital hall in that building was able to hold the play. Our drama department, led by Professor Eric Skiles, was able to achieve this, I want to emphasize, after most of their equipment and materials were destroyed in the flood. All in all, for Dracula, we had 354 people at four shows. We raised about 1,200, almost $1,200 for Harvey Relief, almost $1,200 for future theater scholarships. We were at 92% capacity for the run of the show, and we had two sellout houses. Chancellorhead, members of the board, I've never been prouder to be a faculty member at Lone Star College, Kingwood, and to be a faculty member at Lone Star College. I want to thank you all, especially you Chancellorhead, for the support Kingwood has received from the Lone Star College system. I want to thank our colleagues throughout the system who have supported us, particularly my fellow faculty senate presidents, who have sent out a helping hand throughout this time with the online training, and also particular colleagues at North Harris and at Montgomery who are hosting many of our programs right now. Our response to Harvey has been and continues to be, in my estimation, virtuous. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator.
Anthony?
Yes?
Just a couple of comments. I had the opportunity to visit Kingwood a few days after this happened, and I saw the mess, and I saw how the folks were relocating other places. And if you do me a favor, when you see people, tell them, and I'm sure other board members feel the same way, we really appreciate their dedication, their willingness to make accommodations for our students, and that will always be remembered. And tell them, "Thank you, thank you, thank you so much for looking out for the betterment of our college."
Thank you, Chair Smith. That will mean a lot to them, and it means a lot to me. Thank you.
So before you sit down, we are very attentive to student morale and faculty morale and staff morale and administrative morale. Anthony is very positive. He knows, he's very realistic, as you just saw, he's pretty pragmatic also, so he's been very helpful. When I first went over there, I didn't even recognize him. I think he had, I don't know if he had a ball cap on or not, he had a pair of shorts on, and I was looking at the dress, so a couple of things, we've made exceptions for Kingwood. Jed and Bill back there, don't worry about the logo, I gave them an okay to do that. I just thought, "Well, Will, it's flooded, so we'll make an exception." Then I see everybody wearing jeans every day over there, which is kind of a, we don't really do that on, but...
It was hot that day.
It's fine, yeah. I know, I was wearing a suit, and it was very hot, yeah. I just, I cannot say enough good things about Anthony and Catherine and her group and everybody. It's not, I mean, it's just a whole group of them there. And it's important to me that you all be positive, so the students can be positive, because this stuff happens in life, and you just have to deal with it. And Kingwood especially was hard hit. Not that, it's a college, but the entire community over there was hard hit, so, so thank you.
One thing I forgot to say, Anthony, the day I was over there, when I left, I had a headache for a week, and I don't know whether it's from the stench or from my personal health situation. But don't tell the folks that.
I won't.
Thanks, Anthony. I inadvertently skipped over Mario, I wanted him to talk just for a second about some of the, we've got some policy changes coming up, and I, there's a vigor issue on this, I wanted him to address that before we...
Okay. So wanted to highlight one issue. So we are, this is going to be, hopefully, the last section that has a major rewrite. So two years ago, when I became the General Counsel, one of my tasks was to rewrite the entire policy manual, to make it simpler, make it more accurate with what we're writing, what we're doing, and make it align and sort of help serve the college better, nothing else, make it shorter. It was 489 pages at the time, we're down to about 280. And so one of the things that happens when you're rewriting entire sections is that sometimes with Section 4, this is the second time that it's actually come back, it's the second year in a row that we've tried to push through a new Section 4, which is human resources, for those of you that don't have it memorized. And so last time, we got about 100, a little less than 100 comments, admittedly, most of them negative, about sort of the changes that we were going to do. So we went back to the drawing board, and we're back a year later now with new policies. And I don't know if people lost interest or what happened, but this time, we only got three comments, and two of the three were merriens, telling us that we had done something wrong. And so one of the things that was overlooked in sort of a two-year-long process is if you turn to page 13, specifically under employee rights, prohibited unlawful discrimination and harassment under the policy, it was a simple oversight that we're going to fix by the time we bring it back for a second reading.
Mario, just for a second, on the board, it is, if you go down on your agenda...
It's page 13 of 35?
We don't, it doesn't, hold on a second, because it doesn't read that way up here.
It's Roman numeral four.
Section 4, okay.
Dot E dot 1.1, and it's policy under prohibited unlawful discrimination under employee rights. And what we're going to do, what I'm going to do, is before we bring it back for a second reading and an actual agenda item for y'all to vote on, right after sexual orientation, we are going to add gender identity and gender expression to give our employees the same rights that our students have against discrimination in those two areas. So I just wanted to disclose that that's going to be a change that we have in the second reading for your consideration next month. That was longer than a second, sorry.
I just wanted him to come up and kind of talk to you about where we are, because we've got a couple of questions about this and why we're coming back with this and the timetable and all that, so...
Okay, good. Anything else, Mario?
Could I say something to Mario?
Let's wait until another section.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
This is the opportunity, and this is the section you may be able to say it in. The board members now have the opportunity to talk about meetings and our conferences that they've attended, campus visits, and et cetera. So if anyone has anything that's happened since the last month that you would like the general body to know about?
Now, can I say something about...
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Ten days ago, Mario's kid weighed 2.6 pounds. Today, he weighed 3.8 pounds. That is about a 40% increase in 10 days, and I think he's feeding the kid either pasta or cement.
That's it? Okay. I appreciate you. I thought it was going to be long, but that's great. Anyone else? If not, I'm going to move right along. I'm going to call, I'm going to call on this individual. We have an overachiever in the group, but he is always concerned about making it public. Dr. Holsey is a dentist, but he does a lot of other stuff, and he's recognized internationally in certain categories, so tell us about your latest accomplishments.
So my wife and I went to Florida a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, and I did a triathlon down there that qualified me. I placed fifth in the nation in my age group. And that was, that was well past the requirement to get a slot on Team USA, which is an age group-driven outfit in many sports. And, but I placed high enough that the day before yesterday, I got an email, I got a slot at the World Triathlon Championships in Australia next year. And just so that I can, you don't get called on again, a few months ago, I got an email, Team USA was looking for ambassadors for USA Triathlon, which means you, they were looking for 50 people to go out and promote triathlon in the, to kids and shorter distances. In other words, a triathlon is not necessarily an Ironman, you know what? That'd be a 17-hour event for me. I do the ones that are like two hours, hour and a half, you know, I have a life. And so they want to promote that there are, you know, shorter races, and anybody can do it. I mean, they're not that difficult, really. A lot of the swims are in pools, but they wanted 50 people to be ambassadors for Team USA and the sport of triathlon. So I filled out the application and got an email back a month or so later. They had 3,600 people apply, and I made the cut for the top 225. And then a few days ago, I got an email that said I was chosen as an ambassador for Team USA, which means I've got to go talk to some people now, which, big deal, I'll have fun. So that's, now you can't call me for anything else other than what I'm buying my wife for Christmas or something, and that'll come later. So that's the news.
Well, I tell you, if you do some things, if I hear about things, I'm going to call on you, but otherwise, if you don't want me to call on you, keep them confidential.
My big mouth gets me in trouble.
Yes, well, we appreciate you, and I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, and as I usually say, maintain the momentum.
Absolutely.
Okay, Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board tonight?
Dr. Smith?
Oh.
Board committee reports?
Oh. I called for that, you didn't say anything.
Oh, I thought we were still on board member.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, board committee reports. The grievance policy committee has been asked to reconsider the grievance policy that we have, and we have, and I believe it's going to come up for, Mario, if you could correct me, a first reading when?
December 3rd.
December. So right now, it's posted for public comment?
Yes.
Yes. So we've done it for other policy issues. This one is sort of a labor of love turned into hate for me. But the issue is important because it impacts our people, and there's nothing more important, whether it's a student, faculty, staff, administrator, than our people. And so on this matter in particular, it's important not just to go online and hear about the people, but I think it would be important to organize a town hall or some sort of public forum into which interested parties can voice those to either administrators, make recommendations, as well as board members who are going to be considering this and voting on this. So I urge the administration, as well as with the cooperation of the board, to, between now and the time we vote on it, if not before the first reading, that we have one of these forums, just one, even if it's an online forum, just to get some feedback on what it is, some real-time feedback, rather than the comments that are posted online.
All right, thank you. And I was not trying to overlook you.
Oh, I know.
All right.
But he's so impressive.
I tell you, what can I say? Any other board members, before I move on to the next category? Helen, could, you say there's one person wishing to speak to the board?
John Bergduff. Good evening. I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. The union has long advocated for the due process rights of employees. We firmly believe that if employees have grievances, or if they have disciplinary actions taken against them, they have the right to appeal their cases to an objective third party that has not already ruled against them. That is why in 2015, we endorsed the policy change, opening up a pathway for employees to appeal to the Board of Trustees. Appeal to the Board has not worked as well as hoped. The pathway to appeal was greatly narrowed in a policy revision adopted earlier this year. Under that revision, it seems unlikely that the Board could ever actually hear an appeal. There are proposed revisions to the policy manual, receiving a first reading here this month, that would narrow the pathway even further. Proposed policy 4.G dot 3 dot 2 would deny any due process right of appeal to a terminated non-contractual worker. Under proposed policy 4.G dot 1 dot 4, the chancellor's decision to place an employee on administrative leave would not be subject to administrative review and would not be grievable. On the website of the Office of the General Counsel, as already mentioned, there's a proposed policy change available for comment that would eliminate the right of employees to appeal the grievance to the Board of Trustees altogether. They could address the Board during citizen participation, but since the Board cannot act on or address issues not on the agenda, this provides no remedy and only creates an embarrassing situation for all concerned. A member of the Board at the September 2017 meeting proposed that appeals should stop at the chancellor, invoking his good character. We acknowledge and we appreciate that positive solutions have been found for some employees through the intervention of the current chancellor. However, the AFT believes that policy should be based on ethical principles of due process rather than on the good fortunes of current personalities or circumstances. The AFT acknowledges that the appeals process, as it has turned out in practice, has not been pleasant, but the policy changes mentioned above seem reactive. In short, let us not repeal unless we can also replace. The due process, the due process rights of employees to have their cases heard by a neutral third party is paramount. If that third party is to be the Board of Trustees, let us embrace that paradigm and allow appeals cases to be heard. We believe there are models in other places that work and that are worth considering. If however, the Board is not going to be that neutral third party, there are models in other, in place elsewhere that give that responsibility to other bodies. For example, some schools create... For example, some schools create ad hoc peer review boards consisting of employees chosen by the administration and employees chosen by the aggrieved employee. Use of an outside mediator is another model. Another option is to appoint outside hearing officers with investigative powers, similar to the process the college has adopted for investigating Title IX complaints. Rather than advocate for one particular model at this time, the AFT proposes an open conversation before any policies are changed about better options with input from administrators, board members, and employee organizations, including the union. Lone Star College is known for innovation in higher education. Although developing a fair grievance policy is difficult, we can focus our innovative spirit on building a better process together. As inspiration for this task, I'd like to quote from a speech given to this body in August 2013 by the same member of the Board I referenced earlier. The AFT believes he sets out principles that can guide us in our work, and I quote, "There are two major things that would jerk my chain as a trustee. The first is any violation of anyone's constitutional rights, especially free speech, obligation of contracts, and due process. The second is any poor treatment of people." The board member went on to say, and I quote, "We are all on the same team, and that team consists of trustees, administrators, faculty, and staff, both union and non-union, students, parents, the public, and I trust legislators. There is no good reason we cannot all work together harmoniously." Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thanks for your comment, Jennifer. Appreciate that. Okay, board members, we are now at the position of considering the consent agenda, and earlier this afternoon, items 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 has been pulled for separate consideration. And are there any other items that the board members would like to have considered separately? I assume not, so I will ask for a motion on items 1 through 14 and 20.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second, that we adopt items 1 through 14 and 20. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Okay. We want to talk about each one of these separately, I talked about them together. Jennifer, will you talk about our items 15 through 19, please?
Let me just give you a little background while she's working her way up. So the board policy allowed, the chancellor has emergency powers, limited emergency powers when we have issues like hurricanes or if we had ice storms or something, in between the board meetings to move ahead, because sometimes we can't wait. And then our responsibility is to come back to you, and basically what you're doing is ratifying decisions that we've already made. Those don't happen very often. As a matter of fact, I think since I've been here, it's the first time. For example, I can give you some good examples, like if a chiller went out in the middle of December and we're not meeting again until February, we would need to move on with that, or as soon as the board meeting's out. So it's only going to be in rare cases, this is one of those rare cases, so we, what we've done, and I want Jennifer to go through these with you so that you understand what each one of them is and what we, what we did, so.
And they're all related to Kingwood?
And keep in mind that we have, again, Fund 35, so we know exactly what's happening for the extra expenses, so go ahead.
So the first one, number 15, is for HVAC system work. Kingwood, we are working very hard to get power back on, and that'll actually be a correction later in the facilities report. We were a little too hopeful and wrote in it that power was restored. It is not yet restored, but some of this is to get parts ordered. So Raven Mechanical, this one's for $158,000 for some HVAC work, so this is a contract that has already been signed, so we can move forward with the work, and we have brought it here for ratification. So that's 15. 16 is similar, Prism Electric, this one is for $116,000. We needed to get some new breakers for the central plant. That is the main piece, I think that we are still waiting to get delivered, to hopefully get power restored over at Kingwood. So this one's $116,000. On each of these, you will see the fiscal impact statement is the same, except for the dollar amount where it states that this is coming out of that Fund 35, and it goes on to state what the funding sources within that fund will be. First, insurance, then hopefully FEMA, then where appropriate bond funds, and then cash reserves as some dust settles. And then on action item number 17, this one is with Patterson Dental to order 15 dental hygiene chairs. As I mentioned, we are hoping to get temporary space constructed for the dental hygiene program. Of course, all of the chairs needed to be replaced, so, and of course, there's lead time to get those delivered, so we did go ahead and approve the purchase of these 15 chairs. So that's for $232,000. Going to item number 18, as I mentioned, some of the, trying to get constructed some of the temporary classroom space, this here is the lease for the location where we hope to get that temporary classroom space at. This is at the North Park Shopping Center, so it's a lease agreement. So this is one I think you might see again. Right now, this was put in front of you for three and a half-month term. Depending on the length of time that they may need temporary classrooms there, you might see this one again to extend it for a longer lease. But, so this one is for up to $104,000, and that should take us, I believe, into January or to the end of December. Then action item number 19 is for Blackman-Mooring. They are the ones doing the remediation work over at Kingwood, and this is for $5.8 million. I think this one you may see again as well. Just last week, we got in new cost estimates from them that the total cost might be closer to $7.6 million. So at the time that we drafted this, it was $5.8.
This is a good example of the emergency powers. When we have an issue like this, we, I mean, the option is for us to sit around and wait for the board to meet again. I mean, most of this is common sense, but you don't see it very often, so.
So for this one, for example, Blackman-Mooring, the first day that we all got access to the campus, that Dr. Pearson and myself and several others went out to the campus, that Wednesday after the storm, Blackman-Mooring met us out there, it was that night that I signed the work authorization for them to get started on this. So, I mean, that's an example of this, those policies and procedures that we have in place to do these emergency purchases is what allowed me to be able to sign it, and I think they were on the campus either the next day, the Thursday or the Friday, they arrived at the campus to begin work.
So what happens is when things come up like this, and I, I want to make sure we're not getting out of order here, do we need to do the thing and then talk?
I think if the board wants to discuss it, we need a motion and a second, and let them discuss.
Okay.
You're just giving some background information.
Okay. Because I want to talk about the process for approval of these special items, but we'll do that in, I want to let them know how we make the decision over this, but we need to do that after the motion's made?
No, if the board wants to have a discussion about it, they need to have a motion and a second, then they'll have a discussion.
He can go ahead and explain what you just.
Okay, so these aren't made, these are made in consultation with the president, the CFO, Mario gets involved, and then I get involved, so we would not be making any expenditures if they could wait to the next board meeting. I think we're not going to see any more emergency expenditures, are we? I don't think, we shouldn't.
I think we've caught the majority of them, but there might still be a few out there because we can't, even, well, even notice Blackman-Mooring, we could have brought it earlier, but we didn't because we didn't have a dollar amount yet. And then it turned out that we still might have to come back and revise this.
So there could be something in December if they came back and said, by the way, we can expedite this, because we don't meet in December or January, we're not going to meet again until February, so that's how that might work, so.
Right.
So we're not going very far without your approval, but again, this is just what you pay us for, and to come back and make sure that you know what's going on and ratify it, so.
And process-wise, I might mention too, so in the case of Blackman-Mooring, we had previously done an RFQ for emergency remediation firms, and we had, so we had a vendor pool that was pre-qualified of three firms, and Blackman-Mooring is part of that pool. So in preparation for events such like this, we already have firms pre-qualified, so what the emergency purchase authorization does is allow us to release them to go do the work. But we have, and that did come to the board for approval to approve the vendor pool ahead of time.
Any other comments? Not here? All right, at this point, let's have a motion to adopt items 15 through 19 in a second.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and properly second, that we update, I mean, approve items 15 through 19. We're now open for discussion.
Yes, I'd just like to make clear that item 17 is, it says, purchase of dental chairs and auxiliary equipment, and so 15 chairs, that's round number 16,000 per setup. That is really cheap to set up a dental hygiene treatment delivery system. Somebody got the deal of the century, because I've bought a lot of that stuff, and not only are we going to put it in the temporary facility, whenever the, whenever we get back on the ground at Kingwood, it's going to be moved and used again, so we're not going to have to purchase it a second time, which we're going to have to purchase some anyway because of the new building, so I guess my message is, Dr. Pearson, great job. I mean, really.
It's not me, it's our dental hygiene specialists, it's really our procurement director, Diane Wilson, and our staff, they, and she's.
Isn't that just like her, doesn't she?
Yeah.
But I know that she's right there, proud of the ship, and so thank you so much. The numbers, I was ready for some different numbers, and amazing, thank you.
And if I could mention too, in terms of our processes for emergency procedures, so even though the work got authorized prior to board approval, when possible, we still go and get multiple quotes. So in this case, we did go get three, maybe four quotes on the dental hygiene chairs before we actually signed the emergency purchase approval.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, on action item number, let me scroll up here, 19, the Blackman-Mooring contract, did I hear you say correctly that actually it's going to be more like $7.6 million?
That is the new number they sent us last week. That is not what has been invoiced so far, so I think if we, after we've finished reviewing the estimates behind that new number, we likely will have to come back to the board to request approval for an amendment to this contract. This is ratifying what we've approved so far.
I see, because that's a 31% increase.
Right, well, so the way it works, since the mitigation and remediation, we have a pre-approved vendor pool, like I've mentioned, we can't have pre-approved pricing, so we can't have a, really a not-to-exceed amount. They charge on time and materials.
Okay.
So here, for example, one of the reasons it's so important that we get power restored as quickly as possible is currently it is Blackman-Mooring that is providing the, some of the generators and things over there, which is costing them, which is then costing us, $20,000 a day.
Okay, thank you.
You know, you mentioned earlier that expenditures that occurred prior to October the 10th, FEMA would not require, I guess, bids. So I presume that part of these, this cost may be paid by FEMA anyway, huh?
Yeah, we would hope. This is, this is definitely cost being submitted to FEMA for reimbursement, yes. At all of these agenda items will be submitted.
One thing I'd like to add on the Blackman-Mooring, the level of detail over there is something I've never seen. I mean, they are having to get into nooks and crannies, and I know, were you kidding about the toothbrush? Because I saw them on their hands and knees and doing almost like Q-tips or something down there to clean the place up. That's what we're dealing with, Anthony. So that was not you in that hazmat outfit, was it?
[laughing]
It's, it's beyond anything I've ever seen, I've never heard of a college having that kind of flooding and the other issues we had with it, so it's very detailed and complicated, so.
Okay, any other comments, board members, or questions? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passed. Okay, you're still up with the financial data.
Okay, so tonight's financial report, this is the first monthly financial report for the new fiscal year '18. This is for the month ending September 30th, 2017. The next two charts, I'm going to go through pretty quickly, because basically this is one month worth of actual data, which is not enough information to really make any kind of conclusions on.
Conclusion, yeah.
So the first chart showing our actual revenues as a percent of budget for September was at 17.2%, which is lower than last year, but in line with the year prior. So again, while it's lower, it's hard to draw conclusions based on one month's worth of information. So going to the next chart, actual expenditures as a percent of budget for September was at 6.1%. That one definitely appears to be below the historical average, but there, again, this is where with Harvey, we're going to have to wait and see where a lot of this dust settles. The Harvey-specific-related expenditures are getting put into Fund 35, so those expenditures are not getting picked up here. So in the case of Kingwood, for example, even though it is costing Blackman-Mooring, who then subsequently will invoice us for the generators, currently the costs we've experienced, utility costs for Kingwood have been zero because they've had no power. So that's where, again, especially with one month, and especially with what we have going on with Harvey, September is difficult to draw really any conclusions from.
At some point in time, though, 35 would be included in this.
Yeah, next month, I'm going to have, it'll be a separate page. It's a financial statement for Fund 35.
Got it, thank you.
So going to page three, this is the statement of revenues and expenditures. So now this is the first month where you're going to see the budget, this budget column now reflects the new FY '18 budget that you all approved in August, and again, you see the variance column currently is zero. We are just currently going to show ourselves at budget, as I've said, one month is not much to go on. But with the updates to the ending cash reserve balance that I discussed last month, you do see at the bottom where we're showing the forecasted cash reserves at the end of this fiscal year, so next August 30th, 2018, to be 16.9%.
I want to make sure the board sees that number. I'm probably going to say this every time, because we have made tremendous progress, and Jennifer is doing a great job, I think, of making sure that we get where we need to be, so.
And while I have you, there is one additional item I would like to address, a question from August, board, that I think then with Harvey, kind of fell off my radar, but in August, there was a board agenda item that you all approved on grants that gave the chancellor authorization to enter into, to submit grant applications and enter into grant contracts. And there was a question about how much direct costs Lone Star College had been putting out in response, so.
I think that was from Dr. Scott, and I think you asked that question too, or maybe trustee Holsey, not Holsey, but, we're asking about how, what our percentage of that was and what that actually meant, so.
Yeah, when I went back through, the question was in my notes, so I did want to follow back up with an answer on that. So to give historical numbers, in FY '16, we received $3.8 million in grants, and for those grants, Lone Star College's direct cost share was $253,000. In FY '17, we received $5.2 million in grants, and the direct cost share to Lone Star College was $45,000.
So the issue was, you granted authority, and the question was, what kind of expo, I think the question was, what kind of exposure did we have?
Yes.
And it's not significant in the overall.
And next year, I think, when we bring that board agenda item up for the following fiscal year, next time, I would like to include a not-to-exceed amount for Lone Star College direct costs. But at least for this year, since you did approve the item, I wanted to give some context as to how much we have spent in prior years.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any future agenda items? If not, by the power invested. If not, by the power invested in me, I declare the meeting adjourned. I thought, I thought I was the mayor there.